I'll call a meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to convene as a board of county commissioners. Public forum. Take a motion to go into executive session regarding personnel matter. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll second. I'll second. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all speakers say aye.
Aye.
All votes say nay, motion passed. I'll call a meeting back to order. Come out of executive session at 10:47. Uh, number six, consider motion to appoint emergency manager. We are gonna do that on Tuesday. Okay, discussion regarding, uh, 2021 budget. Uh, should you go to Brenda's right away? Okay.
I'll find her if you want to have her come in.
Aye.
It is. I think we have a profit loss for each of you, but it's 2019. Um, 2020 obviously isn't. Even after. We have the past eight or four again, which is the same as what you've given us. Page forty-six. Couple of years, old insurance, eighteen-five. I guess if there's questions.
Page forty-six.
I can try to answer them. Right now, good insurance that we have is, we have a $4,500 deductible. When I talked to the insurance agents, we said expected six percent increase. So that puts us right back to what you've given us about eighteen-five or eighteen. We don't think that 2020 is gonna be any different financially than what 19 was. I mean, it came up the same amount of trees, fabric, same C, um, same expenses. Nobody's had a raise in the last three years. Conservation just is not doing great in Walworth County. Anybody have any questions?
So we currently are proposing giving the same as we did give it last year, at eighteen-five?
I don't do it at all, because that's what we're here for. Marlon, the chairman, he had the lead. That is what we would like.
So the employee wages of fifty-one thousand, where does all those wages come from?
This season will help. We have a maintenance man also, and me.
Well, if we pay eighteen-five, where does the rest of the money come from? From just the income?
They don't have insurance, Kevin. Only I do.
Who else is putting money in for wages, other than us?
No, that's it. Lots of stuff.
We don't put any money into wages?
No, we just put money in for health insurance. That's all your, all your allocation goes for is my health insurance. And because I'm a company of one, I don't have any younger people to bring the premium down.
They won't let her be on the county's health insurance because she's not a county employee?
I would love it if I could. You guys got better insurance.
Is that like where you're supposed to make your income from, is like planting trees to?
All the, the conservation, we get no allocation from the feds. Uh, that's, it's the, the only allocation we get is from you guys for health insurance. It's been that way. Um, otherwise, yes. We rent out drills in some years. We do custom seating, tree planting, fabric, um, hand plant sales, as you see on there. That's probably our biggest moneymaker. It's a lot of hand plants. That's, that's it for the conservation. We have CRP up to net last year for cost share for the trees. So our numbers are down the way the economy is. I don't foresee a lot of acres for trees and fabric next year. I hope I'm wrong.
So looking, looking at this here, you have, uh, net income loss of twenty-seven, one hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars.
You have to remember depreciation is in there, yes. But we require about a part in the ag, the core part of depreciation in there. So I guess if you take that out, you're still, that's only thirteen thousand, yeah. Yeah. Like I said, it has not been a good couple of years.
So, looking at these numbers, in the case of longevity of things, how long is this thing to be able to last?
Good question, if you have any thought, I don't know. I don't, my opinion, um, we're hoping it turns around. When they brought back the, the CRP cost share for the trees and fabric, we did see seventeen acres of trees in, in 2020. Before that, it was only the non-cost share plots and renting out the drills. Our saving grace there is our equipment is all paid for. You know, we kind of cut to the bare bones for as far as wages. It's a good question.
So there is, other than the eighteen-five that we're giving, uh, for offsetting expenses, there is no other state funds or anything like that?
No, there isn't. We do get, um, some rent from that old quonset, um, down by the county highways. We get $2,400 from there. And we also have been getting $2,400 for the quonset in front of the tree shed. Now, I'm not sure that that's gonna continue because Denny's able to pass away and recently rented it. Carol kind of indicated that they may not rent it in the future. I mean, that's another $4,800 bucks that, you know, we're scrambling. Wasn't like this, I mean, I've been at this job for twenty-seven years. We used to have anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and sixty acres of trees. I think land became too valuable in Walworth County to be able to plant trees. And a lot of people don't have cattle. They don't really care. You know, they don't need that land break.
What do the other counties do in, in the areas for this?
Same, same as us, most of them are a show run. Scott, I, I, I don't know. Um, some of them have cut, um, all of their help to tree plant, you know, to the busy times of the year. Everybody's making cuts where they, where they need to. I mean, it's not just us, I realize you guys are, you know, pinch also. It's the world. It's the way it is. Farming around, it sucks, everything does. I guess the conservation district would be appreciative of anything you could give them towards my wages or towards my health insurance. Like I said, right now, my, my insurance is scattered, $4,500 deductible, which to me isn't much of an insurance policy.
What does your insurance cost a year?
Right now, it was. Yep, yep. Uh, that was nineteen's, yeah, twenties is more. Yeah, two thousand twenties was more.
Sorry, thirteen thousand four hundred.
That was in two thousand nineteen. I wanna say it's about fourteen dollars a month. Thirteen sixty-one something for 2020. And like I said, the insurance agent said it's gonna go up.
Six percent.
That was about two years ago when the district gave us some money back, wasn't it?
We did.
Two or three years ago?
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Because they didn't use it all for insurance.
Yeah, it, it actually was two years ago and we gave it back what we didn't use. They, they went kind of the same route as you guys last year on the HSA. So we used all of it and the remainder, it went into an HSA account for me because my deductible was so high.
I would recommend we leave the same that we did last year.
I don't expect you to make a decision with me sitting here. But I guess if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I guess I think we got everything in front of us, I guess. I think you need to go through.
Yeah, I need to go to the doctor. I got bit by a wasp on, on Sunday. And of course, I'm not one to go ever until they tell me, I take a picture and send to the clinic and it's like, okay, we need you over there now.
Why don't you go do that?
All right, you got questions? You know what, thank you for your time. Becky.
How about let's, let's go back in order, talk to her, let's just start back, we'll engage her when we have a discussion. Got fair enough.
Okay, let's start with the commissioners. Everything there seem all right? Everybody agree? Yeah.
Yeah, we got a lot to come up with then. So we have about three thousand.
We don't know.
Also, we don't know, so we just put that in the case.
Yep.
Page two. Contency. Directions. Courts. Looking. Auditors. Yep. Looking good, everybody? Treasures.
The only thing that increased was the retirement was off. Um, so we increased it by a thousand to make sure that we had the correct amount in there. So COCW eight hundred was the correction. And then also at the last meeting, um, I had asked Nyla about the services and fees going up from six hundred to a thousand and she had put extra in there because, um, she said that there's SDA CO dues that are gonna be coming out of there and the connecting point. So she felt like that a thousand would be better to do. And, uh, services and fees, to have it up on there if something comes up.
I just plugged in what you guys all agreed on. And I handed these out to everyone so they could review them to see if they seen any. And they wanted change.
And he, uh, and last time, didn't he agree to this stuff?
Yeah.
We talked about it afterwards, when you changed it.
Yeah. Yeah, he's the one who pitched these numbers and so I put in what you guys and him agreed on.
Looking good there.
I wrote down on there for utilities fifteen hundred. We got a thousand now, is that what you put in?
He, he, uh, we talked fifteen hundred, but then he came in and he said that they dropped it to a thousand.
Maybe, okay.
We have sixteen hundred up for that.
Do you have sixteen hundred or down to fifteen? Fifteen. But I had written.
Yeah, I have a thousand.
Yeah, I had sixteen hundred though.
The way I'm looking right now.
Mary, I had something though. I had sixteen hundred. But for some reason, I kind of remembered him saying something when he came in the room.
But if you, but if you look at where he's at now, a thousand's not gonna cover it.
I'm not sure, I was wondering, but.
So. It looks like twelve hundred would cover it, if you look at the previous years.
I don't think a thousand's gonna do it. No, I, I guess, I, I don't know.
I have sixteen hundred written on the last deal.
What do you want me to change it to?
Well, somewhere, I said I don't think thousand, either twelve hundred or the fifteen hundred. I would, I would, I would say fifteen.
Okay, I'll change it to that.
Use child. Court eyes. Do we have the same? Yes, Becky.
Um, I think that we possibly might need to add in insurance. Our current employee doesn't have health insurance. But we're gonna be, we're advertising right now, the next one might need health insurance.
We're advertising for Dave's yet?
Yeah, Dave's done. Dave's done thirty, like thirty first.
Yeah, I'll take back for a short time and.
Just tell COVID was.
Yeah.
Do you keep the application that we got last spring?
There was only two. We've gotten one resubmitted so far.
There's one from Bowlin.
Yeah, I could probably track it down and I have it in there somewhere, but.
Is it the one from Bowlin, one applied now or?
No.
Oh, Gary, I was put that way. We got a nut, that is the.
So you're, you're talking the health insurance side of it?
So what would you have to add in for his insurance?
I mean, it's just a suggestion, I would probably do that. Because more than likely, whoever you hire is gonna need health insurance.
What would we add there for one individual?
Only a thousand or what, what would one person do?
Would be that one?
Well, it would depend on whether they have family or not.
I don't think we put in any more than what, what we have on home. Conservation.
I think our cost more than that.
Our cost more than that.
We got very healthy, we should.
More to single, no dependent one would be.
I would say it's gonna be over twenty.
Don't, don't we just pay for single though?
Yeah, no, and if they want family, then they pay the.
Then they pay the balance, right? So that wouldn't be a budget item for us with it.
Well, how she figures that?
It doesn't really think, it doesn't be paying for single.
Yeah.
Single policy. They don't, they don't have family, then they come out there.
No, I'm gonna see, uh, Medicaid.
Medicaid care.
So that's.
Aid.
Yeah.
Right.
I would guess it's gonna be twenty or better.
For our health dental vision and life, it's approximately twenty-four thousand a year for a single.
How do you work that, Becky, now if, if that person wants it for his family too? They have to pay that, but how do you work that in your books that, that, that doesn't go into this budget?
It comes out of their salary. Their portion.
Well, onto their salary, okay.
And now that you guys don't pay half of the family portion, then it would just come out of their salary. They would have to pay the entire half of family portion. Where the grandfathered ones, you still pay half of. So that would cause a little more division.
Change this to about twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, I would put twenty-four thousand in there.
We better put, base that in there.
Change it to twenty-four?
Okay.
Anything else?
Does that figure the ten percent increase?
Yeah, it was about twenty-two thousand. So I just think your twenty-four would be the safe bet.
Yep. Do you have any changes or anything on your budget?
That would be a request. Um, my request is that I would like my salary to be brought up to the same as the treasurer and the registrar. Uh, I honestly wasn't gonna bring it up because we said no raises, I was fine with that. But then when they have a raises, I thought, I'm gonna ask for that. It's about fourteen hundred dollars a year. Difference.
Reason why the landfill ones, I guess I should be referring to.
Yeah.
Is those, those wages were beyond the. So their job duties.
I just think that mine being less than theirs, when I'm in twenty-four years of experience, might be beyond well too. You know, it started out to be, and none of you were here. It started out to be that they were all paid, the three elected offices, eight hundred dollars a year because they had to run for election. But with percentage raises and stuff like that, it's gone from eight hundred dollars a year more than me to fourteen.
Still bottom line, we are elected officials, we still have to, it's still a different party.
But I, when I was hired, I was hired at their salary. And that changed after I was hired. I can't remember the year that it changed. It's been quite a while.
You're saying the change was just because of incremental raises in there, but your base pay would be the same. What if, if somebody took over your job, starting off the same month, started directing equals or, uh, registrar needs, they would be exactly the same.
That's the way they are now.
Yeah, so.
Except for mine is less.
Because of?
That eight hundred dollar raise we got many, many years ago. And then every time a raise came, when it, when it was a percentage raise, that eight hundred dollars, because of percentage raises, grew from eight hundred dollars to fourteen hundred.
I understand that. And percentage raises, for somebody as a blade operator from the highway, you would have got a higher raise than, uh, somebody working in the jail too. So are we supposed to correct all of them now?
I don't think that's what I'm asking for. I mean, I don't.
I understand what you're saying, but next thing, we, we did that, then all of a sudden.
You always say that, Kevin, you always say, if somebody gets it, then everybody else is gonna want it. But not one person had a complaint about no raises this year, not one person. And they were thinking about asking for somewhere between fifty, um, five to fifty-seven cents an hour, would have been what they asked for. Well, then all of a sudden, it came up with the landfill and they're getting, you know, two dollars an hour more.
Yep, and rightfully so.
But it's not rightfully so, if I have twenty-four years of experience and Amanda, who just started.
It all started off on.
More than I do.
It all started off on equal terms.
So did I.
So.
When I started twenty-four years ago, I was the same as the registrar needs and the treasurer.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna ask a question, then, why is, I never know, why is it that, that isn't elected position years?
Cause if you're the assessor and you're doing your job right, you'd never get rid of that. It's not a popular position. And that's why it used to be, and they changed every, all the time, but.
And I'm, that's how I'm gonna look at it too, then, is I mean, if, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that you're not a like person or whoever that person is, I'm not meaning one person. But there's a difference between when you're elected official and you gotta run for that office and if you are drawing a wage. I guess to me, there's a big difference, even if a person does have, uh, I, since you brought that year thing up, I'm, I'm just gonna throw that, another scenario at that. Then we got a guy that, that's in this system that's forty-five years in. So, I don't know. To me, when you, when you gotta run for your, for your job, you've got a job. But anybody that runs for their job. But anybody that runs for their job, they don't know if they're gonna have a job. You do have a job. Cause you you don't have to run for your job, so your odds are good that you do have that job where Josh could be gone. Becky could be gone. No. To me, there there's a there's a big difference between an elected official and a salary person.
Not salary.
Or, well, you know, I just meant that salary.
Okay, I got it.
I guess I think there is a little bit of difference where you don't know what people wanna do, where where your job is there.
Well, I know my job kind of relies on you guys too.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know.
So if you started, if somebody else started over in your office the same time as somebody started up over in director of equalization as in or registered deeds. They would go back to the same base pay.
That is the base pay. They would get what I'm getting now. Cause like Mike, you know, Micah got, Amanda gets what Nyla got, Micah got what Sue got.
Which. That takes into consideration how many years they've been in there too to to get to there.
No, it doesn't. They start out there. They start there.
I understand. They start at where somebody else left off. Instead of starting back over without the years of experience that what do they get for, uh, every year they get what?
What do you mean?
Four dollars per year.
Four dollars a year on top of somebody.
I do get that.
Okay. So if we're gonna, if somebody takes over for you, they start.
They don't get my longevity.
Well, that's what I'm asking is so.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were just talking about longevity.
If they start completely over.
They start with their own longevity.
Right.
Yeah. So I get, I think it's like twenty-four times twenty-three this year. If somebody just started, they'd get four dollars for one.
I guess I'm gonna look at it that exactly how I just said it a second ago. I think there's a difference between your position and an elected position. I guess that's that's where my mind is. It has nothing to do with with who you are. It doesn't matter. I mean, I'm just look, I'm just looking at it.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm just looking at it that I don't believe that that person that is not running for election. That somebody should be making the exact same as them. I guess that's how I look at it. I'm I'm gonna stick to that. But that's me. I don't know what the rest of you guys think.
Most of the other counties around the assessors get split the treasurer and the registered deeds. Money's still, I'm still, I'm not gonna get it if I don't have some. You wanna think about it and talk it over and let me know. I'll get that. Thank you.
Okay.
So what do you wanna do there?
Well, we're gonna try getting some raises. We're gonna get all raises.
We're gonna get in so much trouble.
I'm not saying we should do the whole deal and adjust everything, but I don't know if we can afford it right now.
And call about the block that land for you.
Would, why why would you want to pay not pay the people?
Oh, but what to pay? But if nobody's getting a raise, can we actually do that yet? And what would you have?
Okay, but let's just say.
I agree. I agree. A hundred percent could should get a raise if this isn't the year.
Yes, definitely.
The landfill's self-sufficient though. It's it's been bringing in revenue over and above the expenses every month and it's not run on tax dollars at all.
Yeah, I understand that.
If we had money at the highway department, they were all they're all, they're not.
But my guys are making sixteen dollars an hour to run heavy equipment.
I'm not saying that they should they should have more money, but everybody thinks they should have more money and we're getting into a situation that's not good.
I see it completely.
There there's a difference between a blanket raise and equality raise. Blanket raise would affect everybody. You're just trying to equal out the same, when you're running the same equipment, you should be paid the same. We're only talking like two employees?
Three. Well, all of them is what I put in my request for. I can grab it.
I'm not against those guys getting a raise, but I'm saying the rest of them out there.
But there's a reason, there's a reason that they got it and the other, oh, it's to equal out case deals with the same thing that they're doing.
And like I said, I put up what the guys doing the same job that the highway department make.
So. There's a difference of a equal instead of a blanket raise for everybody. I my suggestion is we leave it the way it is. I agree with Jim that he totally goes through everybody's and completely agree with that before he ends, but there's a lot of stuff that needs to get changed.
And I don't think we have the money for it right now. Any on the highway department, many years without any money out of general funds. That is kind of a big hole.
Sure you're right. Okay, what do we do with the. Our equalization?
Anything else is good, isn't it?
I think there's anything wrong about anything else. I I'm gonna I'm gonna stick to what I said in there. I I just think that being an elected official is, it didn't matter if it's Deb or who was in that office. I wouldn't have said it any different. To me, when you're you're elected official, you are you are at the mercy of the people. You got, you come to your job. It's a job. You don't have to worry what the taxpayer's gonna think in here for four years if they want you in there or not. I think that. That's huge. There's a lot you gotta do too when you're on anybody that runs for any elected spot. You know you gotta spend money to do it. I said normal. So are we gonna move on from this one right now?
I would say, um.
Josh? Wanna see if you see that in the document?
Registered deeds.
Yeah, that's good to me.
Does everything look?
I don't have any changes.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Vet service office. Yeah, that's good to me. All right. Burger animal?
Seven seat.
Josh?
Good morning. I didn't have much on mine. I'm sure something said there was an adjustment. I already talked about it. And you said there was a share of workman's comp, cause I seem to be going over on that one, but and then you said that it's a one lump. Is that paid once a year or how is that?
Yeah, that's paid once a year and then, um, the thing that we changed though was retirement.
Right, and I I just wanted to, but I'm fine with what she did there because it was, yeah, for the workman's comp, we should be okay there. I didn't realize how much that, how many times that came out. That's why I had that seven thousand. On the insurance portion of it. Um, I had an incorrect number in there. I thought it was the other way around. Um, she corrected it and I talked to her about it, so that's why the that's increased to that fifteen point four.
All right, everything else looks good? Yes, Josh?
Yes.
Just the jail was planning to be adjusted, uh, raising the insurance back to. At the last meeting you mentioned, so other than that, everything else. Most of what you want.
Everything look good in there?
Yes.
Order. Looks good there?
Yeah.
Bring this in disaster.
It's not used anymore.
Support and floor. Economic assistance. County nurse. Ambulance. I know there was talk where you leave the money at thirty-one five. Is that what it is?
Can we go back to the county nurse just quickly? County nurse has a has a poll just to give you a comment question. What services are they providing?
They usually come and give you guys a presentation every year, but not this year. I suppose it was the coronavirus.
So they give like immunization shots yet and all that stuff?
Yeah, they do, um, the flu shots, um, WIC. Stuff like that.
Is it? I guess I'm just thinking outside here, but is this something that we could include? As a county nurse into like the jail?
I'm sure not.
We looked at that because part of that program is super greens. It's a lot of the reasoning why you should cook. It's the best answer I got for you, Marion, that you'd have to talk to her directly, but. I guess we we did look into it though.
My only reason I asked the question, I'm just sitting here thinking if we're paying a county nurse thirty-seven thousand dollars, could we pay a county nurse fifty thousand dollars and have to take care of the workers?
I don't know that she would even be close to having time.
Well, I don't know that. I I just asking a question. I mean, cause we pay. We're paying thirty-seven here. We're paying quite a bit at the jail too, aren't we, for for nursing?
Roughly in a year with the hours that she's been putting in, roughly fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, okay. I get, if it's not possible, it's not possible. I just I just kinda come across as an idea.
She was asked at the time, um, Marion, so she was asked at the time and she is terminal now at that time. But it's something I could revisit if I want.
Okay.
All right. Ambulance. You have a thirty-one five?
Yeah.
What the hell is this?
She has sprain.
Is that who?
Mosquito sprain.
Mental yield.
We did receive a request from Marty's mental health for the fifteen-five again for next year. You guys were talking about possibly switching that to a different entity.
Why would, they haven't done anything in two years.
We've been gonna have fifteen-five ever since I can remember.
I know, but we don't use them anymore.
So.
Well, are we gonna switch switch that?
Switch it over to support circle if she doesn't want any of it.
So do you just wanna leave the fifteen-five in the budget and not allocate it to Northeastern Mental Health?
I would say.
You're talking about for the for Bronco.
Right. This this is not, it says mental health center. This is not Northeastern Mental Health Center that we're funding here. It's just for a mental health center, so we can use these funds and put it towards FROCO or whatever.
Yep.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Well, what's our question?
I'm just gonna, um, Kevin, you talked to, I I talked to Jess a little bit also.
Yeah.
On that, um. They rent a they rent an office there for a part-time person. But that's all that they do. They rent an office from Northeast Mental Health.
From Jess?
They used to be in the key insurance building.
Yeah. And then when that, when they got removed and court services got removed out of that professional building, they had to find, and we haven't had. I don't know what it, since it stopped, I mean, since Sherry Thompson was here, she was the last one with Northeast Mental Health that would come into the jail and and do any um evaluations for us. And since then, Jess has been doing it. Um, all the ways we'd have, we'd have to take them all the way to Aberdeen, so I guess if you.
What did we decide is. I I said what the contract was gonna be with Jess. What did we come up with that? Wasn't that?
You guys discussed fifteen-five?
No, I thought it was twenty-five because she's doing all of them. No matter how many she.
Um, just to throw something else in there on top of that, we're in a pilot program for a Vera E Care.
For what?
A Vera E Care. So it's gonna be a mental health evals done through an iPad. That will be in the jail as well and also possibly in patrol cars. It's just a pilot right now, so I cannot tell you how it's gonna go or anything, cause I'm just in the process of starting the pilot program. So I'm not gonna know more until later, so it's not gonna help you right.
So I'm not gonna know more until later, so it's not gonna help you right now, but I just want you to know. It's something we're working on.
Well, I thought we agreed that, uh, we was gonna have a contract with Jess to do all of them.
We're still gonna need that.
We're, we're still gonna have that.
Pilot program, Kevin, um, there's different jail facilities on it, and it's at no cost to us. The pilot program, there's funding already available to take care of the, the tablets that are gonna be needed. We can do them in the field if we need them, need to, when we're dealing with somebody unseen. Um, but also if they come into the jail. But like I said, it's a pilot program, it's a trial thing for, we're still gonna need Jess.
We're gonna test them.
That's not gonna go away.
To see what tweaks need to be made and stuff like that, but we're still gonna need, I'm assuming, just going over.
That's what I thought before was, we was gonna have a contract with Jess to do all of them. She would go to the jails, she would do whatever, pay in one place for the whole year, no matter how many she did. I was thinking it was
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
But you were gonna talk to her and get back to us?
I did.
She said she done twenty-seven up to the end of July, so let's say if she does thirty, or sixty a year, uh, two fifty, that's fifteen thousand. So why do we wanna enter into a contract that costs an extra ten thousand a year?
That's what I recall. Being discussed, is what you said. That's what I recall being discussed, is what you just said.
I called Justin, he said she done twenty-seven, I thought maybe that was total.
Well, I think twenty-eight now, I guess.
Well, to the end of July, it was twenty-seven, it said, so if you figure thirty and half the year, so if she does sixty, it's two fifty, or fifteen thousand.
And I do apologize, Jim, it's two twenty-five, not two fifty.
It's what?
Two twenty-five, not two fifty.
Oh.
But I think part of that, too, and tell me if I'm wrong, I, I wasn't part of that, but my understanding was her availability to Kevin, as far as the contract, she's, I mean,
She would come in.
She would make herself more available. I mean, she, there's times where we can't do it because she's out of town, but there would be other, she would have another clinician that could actually come here, because, uh, she's got several people that are almost up on their training, so, um, but Northeast Mental Health, we, we haven't used in, I don't, you know, for quite some time already.
I would suggest, with the money that we give to Northeast Mental Health in here for Jess, I don't know if her availability would be worth an extra ten thousand dollars a year.
She said she'd also come over to do other things over there, as far as calming people down and getting them back to normal and go counsel them and.
Sometimes she, she does others, other things besides the human HP portion on mental illness, sometimes it's where you're counseling. She can be available for. I think originally, if I remember right, when, when back in the discussion, we were currently paying Northeastern Mental Health fifteen-five. And what we looked at with the calculations of sixteen, uh, service calls, that we were talking to twenty-five, so that that would come with fifteen thousand, that was a total of thirty thousand five hundred. And then Kevin said, what if we just did twenty-five thousand, she takes care of everything and there's no, no cost addition. That's where that twenty-five, I think, came down, was we were basically gonna be saving about five grand over the total expense that we were currently spending.
Well, I would, I still don't understand why we do that, why don't we just take the fifteen thousand we're giving her, five, whatever, give it to Northeast, put it in account and pay Jess for she does sixty, I'm gonna say fifteen thousand a year.
But that doesn't include the other services that she would provide. That's what, I thought we had all agreed upon, the twenty-five thousand.
That's what we talked about that day, and then I got thinking, why do we wanna spend an extra ten thousand dollars? And be in a contract, only pay her. No, maybe she might have to move, maybe it'll cost us sixteen thousand dollars next year, seventeen thousand. I agree, we don't need to pay Northeast Mental Health anything if they're not providing a service. So I think we should take that money we give to them and use that to pay Jess's cell, her services. Or whoever she sends over.
I thought we already agreed on it. All right, I didn't let her know that, as far as I knew, we all agreed on it, that twenty-five thousand. And she was gonna go do a lot more as a counseling and things like that. It's not, better get a hold of her, because
She isn't set in stone until we pass this.
Maybe we pretty better just visit a little more with her, it's obvious there's different feelings. Maybe she could save exactly what more she's gonna bring to, to the table on that. Yes, Josh? How about have her come here? That'd probably be a very good idea. To me, that would make more sense, so we don't say.
Or telephone.
Yeah. Either or, she can't get over it. I think we should visit with Jess instead of sit here and beat this up.
At least she had the same one.
Correct.
You'll, you bet you get a hold of her then and just set up a timer?
Yeah, something. Make oil on this board. Historical museum?
Historical museum, we always give them forty-five hundred, they did put in a request for an increase to fifty-five hundred.
Any increase?
For next year, they requested it.
Going back to the number, I almost forgot. Didn't we, I got written on here to change that to ten?
Uh, there's different mental.
On page thirty, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
I got wrote down ten, I got wrote down ten.
Because we're looking at those numbers going across and...
Okay. We changed a lot of things, I just missed that.
It just takes more pages.
That's why you guys get paid the big ones.
I just, uh, saw that.
Historic museum. You said they requested an extra fif- fifty-five hundred?
No, an extra thousand.
An extra thousand.
I'm not giving out any rate, you can give me another thousand bucks.
I agree on that.
That's like a twenty percent.
What grade?
You're right.
I agree, yeah. Parks. Senior citizens. Extension.
You guys want Sherry up here? She didn't know if you wanted her up here or not.
I guess not either.
Didn't there be changes, we don't think?
Except that one change, I think it's all right. You guys feel it's all right?
Yeah.
Soil conservation.
So, so the soil conservation, we're giving them eighteen, oh, this is, this is, this is, we're giving them that.
Wonder.
Yeah.
There's quite a few counties, I think, that aren't giving that, there's not even votes.
Um, say, Walworth County Soil Conservation District, I'm surprised that that is not part of the county.
We tried for that, for some reason. I don't know, she's made that's date, I don't know. But when they first started coming and asking for money, it was not possible to consider her an employee.
Looking at her profit and losses here, it's not looking good for her. No, and I, I don't know how you solve the problem, I just, make work and they generate the income, I'm not sure that's why I'm... Yeah, I kinda questioned in the
More, more like county again.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, you're gonna have to have as a... Didn't they have that? Didn't Walworth and Campbell have that together a few years back?
I don't know if they ever had that part together.
I don't think they had that part, they had Jim Knebel, who was an extension agent or something, that did it together.
They had some, some of that stuff, but I don't think about that part, well.
That's what I was thinking when she was talking, that's what, unlikely to have to start doing here before you all.
So what was, what was, Danny Gottman, wasn't he in the Walworth County Conservation District?
But I think that's just another part of it.
He's in, in the USDA Natural Resources.
Okay, I was, I was, for some reason, I get, I get those two where they're connected and...
She's in his office, and I don't know how they're tied together.
I mean, it seems like, well...
They worked together on it, that I, that I do know.
Seems like it's just another example of government getting caught in.
Well, they put Campbell County up here now.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm surprised, that's why I'm kinda surprised that they don't have that to- together. But it's just another prime example of government working in a, or a distribution system.
Well, I guess then, then I guess I'm not understanding for sure, then if her health insurance last year for nineteen was thirteen-four, then why wouldn't you not give the six percent raise in that health insurance instead of the eighteen-five, I guess I'm not quite understanding.
Well, she said that.
It's, it's higher than, it was higher than twenty.
Fourteen, fourteen something.
Says it right here.
It was nineteen, it was twenty-nine. So the twenty.
If you go six percent, six percent, well, she just did ten percent.
She says it's fourteen something this year. So.
Even while they, two years ago, they gave some money back.
But they didn't spend it, I don't remember how much it was, but I do remember.
So I'd be for going with a six percent on top of a fourteen, or whatever.
What's the special field?
I would say leave it.
Marion's figuring something.
Becky, on this, on nineteen, it was sixteen-five forty-one, would that number reflect the amount given back, or?
Yeah, I think that's when they wrote that check back.
And then that come off the?
What do you think of Marion?
Well, I, I mean, I'm kind of confused with that, that, uh, or Conservation District is how it's all, how it all works with the way they're operating. If they don't have our funds coming in, they're really in trouble. And that's why I'm kinda confused as to why is that not part of the county, but, I don't know, that can't be done. I, I don't, I guess, my opinion is leave it as it is and, uh, write it out and, uh, I, I'd go either way, if you wanna leave it as it is, we go down to that six percent increase on the health insurance base. I'm not sure why is that responsibility for us to pay that. I don't see how they, I mean, I don't see how they make it work. Just like she said, nobody's planting tree groves anymore, nobody's taking stuff out of farm production because the acres aren't there. So how do you generate income?
Uh, to me, then it's gonna have to make them figure out that they gotta combine.
Yeah, some, somehow, I, I agree, I think that needs to be a combined deal and a Walworth-Campbell Conversation, Conservation District done or something.
Campbell pays a thousand.
One thousand? Are they, is that a full-time position that they're covering too? Or are they covered position or just basically funding some dollars for it? I, whatever, if somebody has a great suggestion, I hope them to.
When did the six percent come up?
Well, what was the number, fourteen, sixteen-five?
They're fourteen-five.
That's what I took at times, I think it was eight hundred eight hundred and seventy bucks, so it'd be fifteen. Three fifteen, three seventy.
I would say take it to fif- to fifteen-five. If they realize that they're losing more money, maybe they'll give the combined quicker.
What's the commission fee on that?
She made it sound like basically they're using this money to pay for health insurance.
That's what I was wondering.
So.
And in twenty, they put the extra into a HSA account like we have.
Because of the, our, yeah, the new.
You have to go forty-five hundred. I would suggest leaving.
Even if you're encouraging it for.
That merging will be in our department.
Eighty-three hundred dollars. But if they don't get the money, they might think a lot faster. Because Marion said it's not a county thing. But it should be, but it isn't.
You said fifteen-five?
That's my suggestion.
I would say let's do that fifteen-five also.
Too bad that them guys ain't here, so maybe we would be having that conversation with an empty chair, guys that are from there. Or maybe we won't have interviews at the next meeting, maybe we should really think about making them be at the next one where, I mean, we had interviews, so I mean, we didn't know how long that was gonna take.
So we should have them do it too.
Should we really visit with them, so?
Who, who is the chair?
I think it was.
Marlon Thorson.
Marlon Thorson?
Maybe we should have Marlon come in and.
I would say so, yeah.
All right, let's do that. Weed, weed control. Finding zoning grant left.
Yearing studies like to visit with the two highway Here instead, I'd like to visit with the two highway commissioners about her budget.
What do you want?
What is that?
Air protection, same. Auto racing.
I'm still gonna request the raises for the guys. They work six days a week, or we're, we're in operation six days a week, no matter what the weather is. It doesn't matter if it's blizzarding, it doesn't matter what the weather's doing, they've gotta be out there. There's hazards placed. We've got really old equipment. Most of the time, air conditioners aren't working. I just don't see how any, how they're doing the same, if not more, than a different department, and they're getting paid significantly less. And if you go and look at job advertisements nowadays, you find a heavy equipment operator for sixteen forty-five an hour. And we've got nine, ten years' experience. And, I mean, I'm not trying to say specific people, but all's the foreman and the mechanic. And just the mechanic down here is getting twenty-one fifty-five an hour. We work holidays. And like I said, it doesn't matter what the weather's doing.
Pretty sure I think we're all agreeing on that they're underpaid for condition area, and what Jim was saying, there is a timing.
We've been bringing in more revenue than we, than ever. Increasing revenues, increasing duties. I mean, we're still gonna, still looking like we're gonna have fifty thousand dollar profit next year. I just request that you guys think long and hard about that, because they sometimes get the feeling that they're the dumb of the county. Old equipment gets moved out there, you know, things like that, and they're getting paid significantly less than somebody doing what they're doing.
Like Jim said, we're not, everything's not done yet.
I wish they'd have done this six years ago, I've only been here five.
But it should've been done six years ago.
I wish they would've.
It should've been done all these years, but it wasn't.
And I know, when I first come here, we talked to Ryan and talked to Ryan about that.
Of course we did, Jim.
And it didn't happen. This is just a tough spot, I I don't really know what they.
I got nothing to lose to those guys, they deserve us, but I got a lot of calls.
Well, my phone rang about nonstop from here to Walworth.
You got your casual highway department sitting there, give away a two dollar raise.
Would those guys at the highway department be working for sixteen dollars an hour, round and blades?
I imagine they might be if they're on the job.
Yeah, so maybe they should be lowered to down to what my guys are at.
I think they have to get rid of those.
Just saying, you know, it seems like that they should be.
Get a little raise, I guess that is what they should have.
I don't, I don't know if I agree with that. The only reason I say that, that Davis is, and I think, and I think the difference here is the fact that we're trying to bring a base up towards equal. We're not giving raises based on longevity or the cost of work that raised. I think we're just trying to get things equalized, and I think there's a big difference between that and a pay raise. Only because, only, and I agree, that it's a, it's a tough situation, but it's a, it's one of those things where is it right that we are paying them what it's worth? I mean, I would.
But now that we're not giving them raises.
I understand.
Some raises you can find at that much, so, but this isn't the year.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I just, I, I feel like this is a, to me, it's a, it's a total different animal than a pay raise on, on, on the, on the scale of the county. This is a, this is an equalization type thing to get them up to where they should've been. I mean, realistically.
Jim hit it on the head.
Oh, yeah, they're nice if they had done five, six years ago, absolutely. But, does that mean that it's not like that we don't do it? You get them up to where it should be?
And I, I fully understand, I, it's a tough decision. We go with this year, we're gonna have the same discussion next year. Next year, next.
So then, if we wait for two years and we do it two years from now, and then you give everybody a pay raise, are you gonna give these guys a much larger pay raise to bring them up to equal?
Be the same discussion.
Then you're gonna have the same problem. That's, that's the difference.
If somebody, if we're all getting the raise, it would be easy.
I, I think you're gonna run into the same, I think you're gonna run into the same complaints that somebody's getting way more of a raise than I'm getting.
Yeah, that's a whole suggestion.
One guy might be getting three percent, the other might be getting ten.
Yeah, that's, that's where I think the difference is, and you're, you're giving a raise based on, on equalization, not necessarily just a, a cost of work pay raise.
I mean, I get it, it's your guys' decision ultimately, and I understand where you're coming from there. I just have a, an issue with a brand-new, part-time secretary or deputy is making fifty cents less an hour than these guys often hazardly, hazardous days running heavy equipment. It doesn't seem right, and that's, that's my, what I have to say. Other than that, I didn't change anything except what we had discussed in the meeting.
This is worse than parent emergency manager. Like, I can see there's Bobbin on the other hand. You know, that he says, that stand alone is really not coming out of the pocket. And I can hear jails the same way, they bring in a lot of money and and they wanna raise every, no.
All good thinking, so.
Put it this way, I guess if you approach these other departments and ask them if they'd rather go down to what those other guys are getting to equalize it, would they, would they be willing to do that?
I'm not disagreeing with.
Very simple answer, I think.
Like I say, with this, and we talked, when I first came, we talked about, Ryan about this, and he never did request it.
Yeah, and I don't.
I'm not sure it would've been any easier back then, but.
We gotta make that decision while he stays here soon, so. All right, with the number eight, I think I'll most good here.
Ooh.
I got a book on the floor, any second? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Do you want these old budgets Becky to shred them, or?
Doesn't matter, if you don't want it, I can take it. Just sort of the shredder.
I don't have a shredder.